I knew I was going to be chair, I had a feeling so early because if I got all this stuff. We have, of course, a minute first. Any questions about the minute and the addition of the traction? I'll move to approve. Second. Motion favor. Hi. I appear permit. After the fact permit. Mr. Dirt. Dirt here. Your permit, Dirt. Address will part.
I knew that only wasn't going to be here, I thought they were going to try either Zoom or the peer company was going to try and come. But what had happened is they had. Okay, they had a peer on the property, actually they have a peer that was approved by the board, they have a rap that was appeared by the board a couple of years ago. There was another peer on the other side of the island. And they said if we take that, if we replace that, can we do it if it's exactly what it was, and we said yes, not knowing that what was out there is different than what was registered. So they started doing what was out there versus what was registered and we had them stop work pending approval. So they've already have this peer build, it's going to go exactly what was out there when they bought the house. And this is kind of would be on the. Would be on the west side of the island, I think.
Any questions? Yes, say, okay. Anybody from? Audience would like to speak to this. The idea that what it is very simply explained is. He didn't pay the permit because he put something that was already there and it was actually a new owner. And if you're with their soul. I guess in my recommendation to the committee and anybody else that we approved that. Not his doing, but we want to have him take it out. Anybody in the audience? Motion. I'm making motion approve. Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Second. Go on favor.
Hi.
Excuse me, I have my Harry Potter glasses on. Peer permit beta on vacant property located on Riverside Road, a budding 5813 Riverside Road. Someone here to talk about that? She must have known I was going to be here, so.
This is another one that's existing.
Well, I talked it over with much. We need proof that he that they own the property, they just can't build. The peer on it.
He owns it.
He owns it.
Yeah, oh, we know, yeah, we are very well aware, the peer that was there, they just put an L at the.
Okay.
Of the existing one, and it, yeah, he owns it and has been there.
Alright, so it's just an L, so would not be. An issue. Appropriate substantial property. More than enough.
Yeah, funny.
Okay, anybody in the audience want to speak to this permit? Like to make motion? I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
CSM Regus? Is that correct that Brown said right?
Regusi.
Regusi, oh, okay, okay. Not even close. And your name and address. And I just, well, she can hear.
Alan Regusi. Do you want my current address? Is that how this works? Okay. First time talking to this. Yes, 1159 North Pembroke Road, Jamesville, Wisconsin, 53546.
Okay, well, explain what we'd like to do.
Yep, we're looking this split off approximately five acres from a parent parcel. And for single family residents that my wife would like to go. Kind of our family homestead.
Okay. We've done this before, are there a couple of things we should probably bring up, maybe on the committee like the? Anything about this?
It's a one half acre.
No, approximately five acres.
Okay, let's. Five acre part.
We usually don't allow, we don't allow to separate those five acres, like if you wanted to go 10 houses there, or whatever, you'd have to pause by.
Really?
Yep.
Yeah, we sort of over the years, we were very tough on them. Split off, we never go back, even 20 years ago. The county would say, oh, you can do it if you're going to work fire. Live on a plant, that's obviously not what you're going to do. You're living there, you're not, you're running the plant. Years ago, yeah, they have that technology. Over the years, we've been. It would be difficult to deny this person since we've done it so many times. Okay, without. Going down the turnabout, did you? Say your motion at possible re subdivision of the other parcel, either?
No.
No, because that should be in a minute, you're only talking about getting your five acres each, right?
Yeah.
Nothing, I don't want anything in the minutes that we keep that the town has approved any type of division of the 35 acres that's left.
Okay.
That's that's wrong to your parents, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So. Again, you have your own access.
Yeah, we would, well, we might, that's, we're waiting for a decision on that. I talked to.
What state highway?
20.
Yeah. That would be your access.
So, yeah. He gave me an option, not a highway DOT, he gave me an option of using. The eastern side. For an access, but allowing.
A shared driveway?
Right, I'd have to do.
It's a bad idea, it's a bad idea, so, yeah, from your standpoint.
Which driveway would that be?
So, on the very east side. Of the property. He proposed the DOT said I could do an access almost budding up. East property line, but I would have if, I forget the word I'm looking for.
Is it easement?
Easement to the neighboring property.
Eastern system.
Or I could use the current farm driveway and then I could just go try to drive right back.
Well, leave it or off, you have your own access, so. If I think we are to do so, a shared driveway, yeah, probably nothing but problems. Get new neighbors, you don't get along with.
Because that shared driveway, it looks like it would go between the agricultural buildings.
Correct.
Between barns and pole barns and everything.
Right.
Yeah.
They get the board wishes to represent the, this is our recommendation to the town for this one. Might want it just on the high risk one. That's. He then has something to say about this, what he said. That's what we might. And you better offer him and for his parents to along with it.
Okay, to be clear, we're going to motion it to the board, however, on there, we're waiting for some approval of the highway department or something.
He's waiting for some approval, I guess, but I think it would benefit him. And his hopes that the statement that the town could division, as it doesn't like the shared driveway. Either, you don't like.
I'm 50/50 on it, so I was kind of.
I mean, I've seen some real problems, I mean. Really, these people aren't having court of law, that's just a, a few of them. I sure, I sure wouldn't want it, I would. As far as the division, we have completely ignored. Your purpose of that long time, and so we can't tell them no.
Any questions from the audience on this issue? Probably going before the board next weekend, or next week, it should not be an issue from what they gather here, so. If I can have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve, to approve with. Just to prove, uh.
To prove what he is going to do with the deal generation. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the five acres from his parents' property. And in that motion, I would improve that it would be his decision where his driveway goes. I would also.
They have to have a unanimous decision of this board to approve this.
You've heard that. Do you second this? I'm just hung up on the shared driveway, just looking at those buildings and close. But some future owners would have to navigate really good. Back to that.
It's not that it can't be or, yeah. I thought it might be helpful to him if he thought that he. I understand they was going, excuse me, ring going. This is the best approach for you.
But you don't have approval currently from the DOT to enter up the 20th part?
Not official approval, no, he gave me two recommendations, one on the east side or use the current access us there. With easements, right, they do.
What if we do this tonight? Instead of motioning on the five acres tonight, all of that, why don't we just? Recommend that it goes to the board and they can make that final decision, then they'll have proof hopefully by the DOT.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that sounds good.
I was drawing that one. Okay. Okay. Somebody just want to move.
So, sure, I'll move to. Approve the five acres. And move this to the town board without a. Decision tonight on where the access point is.
Second. If we understand that enough to hear that we talk quiet. We'll do the five acres, we recommend that they accept the five acres and then next week the town board will. Clear it up with whether the access, you know, supplies. Highway. It's always an issue with the DOT one way or the other. Okay? All those in favor?
Second.
Got it? You understand it?
Yeah, yeah, we don't object to this separation of the land.
Oh, five acres.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Good luck. State.
Obviously the problem is here. So this will be the last thing on the minutes tonight, and let's take a look. Conditional use permit, plan review. Materials from the Robert Ethick, going apart, request to resume sand and gravel operation. As new operators and to extend operations to the abiding M4 property, as well as propose a new reclamation plan. Is there somebody here from? Name and address.
Robert Ethick, 30621 57th Street, Salem, Wisconsin. So we're proposing to do is take over the old Beck gravel pit. That was. The county took the conditional use from the last operator because they were out of compliance. And what we want to do is bring it back into compliance and. Build some burns and landscape it up and do it in phases. And that would be phase one, we'll get that phase under control and move to the west and into the M4 zoning on the next property. And all, and all the truck traffic goes out, putting a park road. Is it? Um, that.
Probably for that, that the person.
Yeah.
Didn't push bomb.
Well, Chris Kate was the operator. And he, Chris Kate, yeah, he was in the fall.
Right, he also had the one here on Wall Street.
Yeah, so, and the county wasn't reacting to his performance.
Okay.
So what we, we feel is a really nice fit for the recent moving west. That property that's M4 has road frontage out onto 20. So instead of bringing all that material out onto 20. Will have more impact on neighbors than the way that our road that's already being used as a.
There are a number of issues that. I see here, have you received the conditional permit from Racine County?
They asked us to come here first, but we've met with them numerous times, Brian Jensen. And we're all submitted there and we've been talking with them, so we are on their agenda.
Okay.
And I know Brian came up to the site as well as Chad Jensen.
Okay, Michael?
There's normally, Heather, they pay an initial fee for the bigger mix man. Any type of fee paid to the township to get our engineers as well.
Our engineer has not been involved.
No, I don't know that, but typically if we is paid for the new, the biotransition, the new operation because of the expansion.
I believe upon approval, we would do pay that fee.
Do the fee, right.
What if you deny?
Uh, for the application fee, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think our ordinance does have an initial application fee, I just had to look it up.
I believe, I don't know if she collected it, but there would have been an app, an application fee always to come on the planning commission, there always is.
One thing is that this is like what they, we, her, Mary Claus, I already hear that. And sometimes people don't like to be at the end of the year, the quarter, the contrary, what you want to hear. So we typically try to get some of that money upfront. I can check it out tomorrow, but I'm sure we do have an initial application.
Well, I know we do for land disturbance, but yeah.
I'm saying, but he's expanding, okay, as I understand it, he's not just renewal, like, you know, 3,000 RPI, whatever that is, okay? This is a brand new.
It'd be a new pit.
This is a brand new expansion. The required engineers, I still don't have the amount here, but let's put it this way, we will leave that, I assume.
Yes. Please.
Yeah, I mean. That was at one point, I was just.
I can get with Tina tomorrow on that.
I, I, I just. I don't.
She's back.
Hello, did you want me to reach back to Tina tomorrow?
Yeah, we can, because I'll look into the ordinance too, so I'm not certain.
Yeah, otherwise, I know, I've been in touch with Tina, so I can email her.
That just covers those.
Any questions to the board? If that's not the case today, I assume there would be somebody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue.
I would.
Okay, my name is.
My name is John Gulch. My address is. 22104 West Six Mile Road. I'm on the other side of One Lake, I'm speaking for my dad, his house is the one right in front of where this is going to occur. So. Yes, so we have some major concerns here, first of all, hours of operation, wants to start this at six in the morning. Yes, yeah, I mean, he says so that the school bus, I'm going to start after school buses, you want to listen to the construction equipment, buckets being loaded. OSHA buzzers at six in the morning. I'm sure my dad, okay, if you look at this particular map. Notice there's privacy berms everywhere except between the closest residence to where this is going to be, there's no privacy berom there. That one's completely left out, if you look to the north, to the north of my dad, of this property, the south side of my dad's. You have a bigger picture there. Right now, it's just phase three temporary storage is the pile that's there between my dad's house and. This pit. So we have those concerns. He says he's going to turn it into a pond. Have you seen anything old water around here? So it's just going to be a big hole, just like a pond, 20, and he's done. Um. So we've got the 6:00 AM start time, and then he wants to start at 7:30 on the weekends. Or not, I mean. At 8:00 AM on the weekends, so. I'm sorry, I'm not really good at this, but his current proposal is 6:00 AM during the week and 8:00, and 7:00 AM on the weekends. It's kind of a little bit of a. Early start for construction equipment that's going to go on every day. And have, have any of you walked that property, been back there, it's a slope all the way from where he's going to be mining to my dad's house downhill. There, again, there's no privacy berom, nothing to stop the erosion from ending up on my dad's rock. So there are some major concerns here that I would hope you guys would take a look at before you approve of this. And think of if it was behind your house or your parents' house, would this be a good fit, especially phase three? Phase three comes way down to within 100, well, he's got 100 feet of setback to my dad's property. So. Um, those are my, my ass concerns, my concerns. I don't know what else to tell you, other than I would hope you guys would go look at what's out there before you approve this, it was shut down before because of compliance. So we, it's just, it's all downhill, right to my dad's house from where he wants to dig. So. That's all I got to say, like I said, I'm not really good at this, these are the concerns that I came up with.
Could you step over here?
Oh, to you. My dad's house is this one right here. This is his house here, and his property line is right here, and if you look at here's Berm. And then on the other phase two. Right, here, up to that one here, my dad's house is here, there's neighbors here, we've got a bunch of houses here, we've got a little privacy berom on this side of the project. All he's got is temporary stockpile.
Which is a lot of this crap.
Oh. Probably run right up this brown line here, back to here, so here. So, you want me to go on? Okay. It's like in this area, and it goes back to here, here. This is his, and then neighbors is here. Isn't notice this, this pile of stuff. Here, that's because we hold my dad's whole park, and his property is here.
Yeah, you're going to get, I mean, that.
We're done. Yeah, I'll show you. Where are the berms? Oh. No, there's no berom. Berom here, that's phase one. These two berms over here, you know, what they got between that and that is a temporary stockpile, it'll be over. Take out the pile, miss. This from here all the way down, nothing, downhill, so it didn't run off, because they end up on my dad's property right here.
But it would have taken.
Correct. Yeah, this is his farm, this is his barn, and this is the house.
Received anything in writing?
Nothing came in writing, no. I, I feel unsettled more.
You're talking, expanding 10, so we may want to start digging here at six in the morning. So. There, I mean, obviously, my dad doesn't want it. The series, it's not, but.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Sir?
Uh, still.
Sir? You got it. Hold on, okay.
My name is Lynn Nowell, I own the property at 31205 High Drive. This project proposed expansion would run right along the back and the side of the 15 acres that we own. And run as an equestrian business right now, so we're talking about gravel trucks running right along our property where we train. Horses, this would severely impact our ability to run our business safely. We've also been concerned, which is, this is another matter, we've also been concerned for, as long as we've been there, we've owned the property for 30 years. About the. The gun activity that takes place in the pit. The firing of the automatic rifles sometimes goes on, we never know when it's going to start, we don't know when it's going to stop. And it will go on sometimes for hours, again, impacting our ability to schedule times for people to come and ride their horses. And train their horses, which we get paid for, so. If this gun activity is going to be continuing, we'd certainly like to know if there's a way that we could. That we could make some kind of adjustments, so it doesn't impact on our ability to use our property to make a living.
Would you come up here and show us on the map exactly where your property is?
High Drive, it's this. It's 15 acres here, and this is the barn, here is the riding arena, these, you can likely see the lines, these are all turnout pastures for horses, we pasture horses all the way back. To the property line, so they're proposing.
This is where you're.
Yes, yes. But there was reference made to access eventually on the Highway 20, and this is already the pit that's, where there's equipment running. So, we're not happy about it. We've made significant investment into this 15 acres to. To, you know, be able to run a, a nice business within the confines of the county and the town, you know, require as far as number of animals on the property and so forth. Yes. No, because I don't think, I don't know that what they've been doing was illegal.
Automatic.
Oh, that's terrifying.
I mean, automatic.
Michael?
Yeah, I got a real question.
It's not just shooting cans in a row.
I commented in there, Capor, right?
Yes.
Is Capor representing the applicants as well, these plants? So Capor.
Yeah, Capor too.
So Capor's your, your engineer near, it's also the town engineer, that's a problem.
They did speak.
That's a problem, we had that situation from many years ago. With respect to. A, we had a town engineer many, it's 30 years ago, 30, 30 years ago, I've been, I've been here for almost 50 years. But 30 years ago, we had a town engineer come in with a preliminary class. For the developer, who is also supposed to be the person that uses it with their town, so we stopped that. Now, we don't care about minor land divisions, one acre off, something simple, but when you're talking about a. Major operation here. We will have to then. Use a different engineer besides the core, I'm not saying that there should be a comment here, but I'm saying we can't use Capor to produce it. And to recommend it at the same time. I've had to stay out of cases where clients will come to me and ask, help me get the town variance, I tell them I can't. So variance is approved, and I go before the county, I can't touch it otherwise, but I'm not saying Capor doesn't do excellent work, they do. But I'm saying they can't be judge and jury at the same time. So, see there, so I think that, I don't, the town board's going to have to make that decision, but it's just my recommendation. That you can't have them doing both.
Yeah, Mike, anybody else like to speak on this right away? Maybe ever pick up to one of our meetings, which is wonderful.
Hi, my name is Matt Gunkel. Uh, I live at three one three three four Hy Drive. Uh, this proposed operation borders my land both on itself, the west side of my property. I'm gonna show you.
I'm getting a pretty good idea what's going on.
So I am, if you take that line straight down and straight across, I'm at one of the cutouts.
Okay.
So, yeah. Yep. Nope, this, so you draw this line straight up and across, that's. So, you know, Bob and Rick uh, came to my house on Friday and talked to me, I, I thought that was, you know, pretty nice of them. Um, Bob seems like a stand-up guy, uh, but businesses gets old and people retire. And I think that we, you know, sat here four years ago in a meeting in Cornerstone. And they assured us that they were going to run a clean, you know, good operation and they were shut down. So if, you know, we're talking about approving any kind of permit, we need to put protections in. I mean, I, I, I get it, i- if they buy the land, it's their land and people should be able to use their land, but. It has not, you know, affect our ability to use our land. And for our property rights to enjoy our property. So my concerns are with noise, uh, like was mentioned with some of the hours. Also, there's, you know, alarms that can be put on equipment that, you know, sense ambient sound. Uh, I would suggest we maybe require those, especially phase three is again my biggest concern. The back pit already was opened. I mean, it, it probably they do a better job of what's there now for us as a town, right? Um, that's already kind of a mess. Phase two is behind the tree line, it's pretty far away from all the residences. I, I guess I, I personally don't have that big of a problem with it. Phase three is two hundred yards from my uh, my property, well, my, my house, I mean, I have a picture here. From my kitchen window, I mean, that tree line is not that far. Give them to you. You know, I mean, when we're looking at this. And, you know, you can see this is my, my window frame, this is from my window, that's the tree line, that's the tree line. So, I mean, it's.
It looks further out here.
It looks further out there than from my house. So, noise, I mean, reasonable hours of operation. Um, what we can require in the conditional use permit to keep it as quiet as possible. I think dust is a big concern of mine in phase three. I think we need to do whatever we can to control dust, I know that there's specific equipment. That, you know, can suppress dust, there, there's hydraulic equipment to suppress dust. I would hope that we could include some of those requirements in any conditional use permit, especially in, in that phase three. Um, the privacy firm that was mentioned. Um, it's my understanding after talking to Bob that that temporary stockpile is a privacy firm, it's just not marked one because. It will be taken down, the other, the green ones will stay permanently. I, I'm fine with that, I would like trees planted to try to hide the berm and on top of the berm to make it taller. I think we need to specify how tall that berm is. Um, to make sure that it, it, I don't have to look at mining equipment, my neighbors don't have to look at mining equipment. Personally, I would prefer to set further back from the highway. If we could get a thousand foot setback from the highway, I think that would be reasonable, that would almost put it into the tree line. And if it's behind the tree line, it's behind the man's property, it's behind my property, you can't really see it. That seems reasonable, I think we have to figure out how we can be reasonable. Um, and all coexist. I, I get that it's already zoned mining, right? So at some point, planning commission made a, a decision that mining is okay there. But as we look at a conditional use permit, I think we have to learn our lesson from Cornerstone. Where maybe we should put more requirements on it. And we have a chance to do it again. If we can address visuals, the noise and, and the dust, that would be fantastic. All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Mary Meyer. I live at sixty nine sixteen McCannery Street, which is Highway P, and that is where Bob's business Hillside Aggregates takes place. We are totally surrounded by his pit. I can truthfully say we don't hear really much noise from him, other than the gravel trucks coming in and out. We don't hear the mining noise. It's never been an issue to us. There was previous owners of that same property before Bob took over, total different situation was madness. And I want to speak in behalf that he's been a good neighbor. If there's a problem or a question, he always responds, he keeps a clean operation. You're going to have some dust somehow, but it really isn't as bad as it could be. And I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
All right, I got a good question. Sir, you're gonna have a bad plant there at any time? All right, so no bad plant? Any blasting?
No, and the process it will take place in phase one.
Okay, so no blasting, no, no future bad plant for whether.
And, and to talk about Matt's situation with them burns. So we're mining up to that berm that's going to the north. We're only gonna have like a, a ten-foot cut of earth and then it will be in the water. So we'll be way down below the berm.
Is it your anticipation when it's restored that you're gonna get residential loss out of there?
That's long-term, that's the, my son, Tom, that's their.
Last operator that donated a couple of those shoots of rocks to the town or. No, I'm serious about that, they're just about done. And the town, you know, we want to walk on it, the property is located. I, Heather can help you with that, but one of the developments is they hope. That's something we can develop.
We've got uh, three other gravel pits and the county is very impressed with our, our operations.
Well, I'm not saying it's any longer operation, I'm just saying, okay, you submit an application. Do you agree that this matter? From a timeline standpoint, because the town has to act in a certain degree of fact, okay? You submit an application. Do you agree that the planning board can recommend to the town board? That this matter be put on hold for further information to develop, there certainly isn't enough to tell. But if you don't agree to it, I'm gonna recommend to the town board that they uh. Recommend, excuse me, I recommend to the planning commission that they try, recommend to the town board to try.
Give us some uh.
Some other engineer, but I know that you don't have all the information there. Which you should have. You got all these people's questions that they've either answered. And I'm really concerned of having the same firm be on both sides. How does, how does Capor judge this? And again, this was just a deed to minor land division, we wouldn't care. But this is, this is sort of a big deal.
We have to look at your consideration.
I know that, but I can't believe that we would use the same unsharing firm on both sides. And then typically we put up a bond. To cover up, uh, you know, literally typically a letter of credit we like. Uh, to cover any cost that would be incurred by the town, that the mayor agrees. So we're certainly not gonna be paying Capor. A higher end of it and then having to develop a paper as well. So, okay, that can't be done. I mean, the board can do what they want, but I'm just telling them.
Well, the county, the county makes us put a bond.
You've got, she rest, the, the restoration is a county issue. We put that away from us years ago, that's why we had to fix it out there all the years because we want import. We stopped them. Um, going any further, plus the county to go over the restoration. That's just two years, I don't know what time. That's just why, but I think if you voluntarily agree that this can come back. Before the planning permission, if we don't lose any time periods for it yet, then I have no problem.
I'm going back to us first.
I think so, that's just why. You try.
Uh, I guess if you do that, you're going to know precisely what. What they're missing. And Heather, can you get?
Well, can you say what they're missing, I guess county.
You can't come back with the same thing, there are many issues here and.
I, I'm sorry, what I'm saying is. I mean, something I just haven't, haven't seen in the past, I was involved in that common street, very big one over there. Now I'm going for the distance and all the time. Uh, typically the people who are putting themselves with these, have you done that, have you done it all?
Yeah, I believe, your name's Matt, right? Matt was just up there and said we were at his house.
I mean, it's a great, that's what, and uh.
Well, it depends on what you mean, Matt. Ring the doorbell and say hi, I'm here and this is what I'm gonna do in your backyard, that's a meeting.
We're not going for rezone, we're just going, you got, you got the zoning, this is your side, you're gonna follow. And it's traditions that are supposed to, that aren't for.
Okay, well, you guys hold the, the cards, tell us what we gotta do. We're willing, we're willing to do whatever you guys want us to do.
I can't force you, because you submitted that.
No, we want to, we want to do what you want.
All I, again, I don't make the decision, I just give recommendations, but I have something to do with policy, let's see how policy. But I would recommend that we meet with all these people and see if it can work out something. That they would live with. And bringing back the word of a town planning commission.
This has been done before on many different instances, not just mining. Where individuals got together with the other individuals near them, et cetera, problems get solved that way. There are many issues that we can see, but. I think we've got a motion going here soon, so anybody else want something to say quickly? Sure. I want to thank everybody for coming anyway.
My name is Jolene Evans, two nine three two four Durant Avenue. In Burlington, we live directly across the street from Pine Lakes Rebel Operation. And um, it happened twenty years ago, it's like Asia who's sitting here, except that was on the upside. Um, we've just gone through a big, don't build a quarry. About a quarter mile away from our house and that didn't pan out for the people who wanted to develop a quarry. And then Bob came in wanting to take over the old folks' property, sand pit. And we were pretty heated up. We were, we had, we had our juices flowing from the quarry thing and we were heated up with all the issues I'm hearing here tonight. Exactly, so, um. He, he, we actually did have a neighborhood meeting, Bob came to it, to us in, um. I, I cannot say better things about Bob, he's a very, um. A very nice man and he's a very extremely nice thing. Um, if there's a rule that is, that is required him to follow, it gets followed to the letter. He doesn't shirt anything, the place was literally an ugly old abandoned sand pit and you go. You go there now, it's just, I, I can't say piles of locker beautiful, but what he's done with the surrounding property is very attractive. Um, he did build firms. And in fact, this is kind of funny, he built a berm across from us and our neighbors. And it's a fine berm, keeps it mowed, everything's fine. And I was eating coffee, drinking coffee with our neighbors one day and they said, you know, I feel bad about that berm. What do you mean the berm? And they said, well, it, it goes too high, now we can't see to the south. I said, well, tell Bob. And they said, no, 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 he went to all that trouble, it's all seated down, that's fine. And um, so I told Bob, and I don't know the timeline, I don't recall, it was quite a while ago. But that berm was lowered so that our neighbors would have their view to the south. Um, that's kind of.
So Bob, Bob is obviously somebody people could work with.
Absolutely, absolutely, um. We were worried about noise. Um, like you folks, there were guns, shotguns always going off over there. And um, because it's abandoned, nobody's watching over it. And when Bob took over, there has not been a gunshot since two thousand two. There's no, there's no gunfire over there, none. It's, as far as noise goes, um, weekends, afternoon on Saturday, it's absolutely quiet. There's nothing on Saturday afternoon, Saturday night, all day Sunday, sorry about that, there's, there's no noise from over there. It's like a dead zone, it really is, it's nothing's going on during the week. The noise really isn't that bad. Because. It just isn't, we live on a highway, so there's highway noise and it is far less, far less noisy than highway. Highway noise, so it's indiscernible almost for us.
Thank you.
And a couple other things, um. He's planted trees, he's, he's actually kind of beautified the property, um, so it's visually. Huge improvement from what it was. Um, the kind of neighbor he is, uh, we had motorcycle-sized ice chunks from the highway one time. And there's no way we could move it with a snow blower or even by hand, they were too big. And Bob had his guys over within twenty minutes and he cleared out the bottom of our driveway, highway eleven, just all that stuff. He also went and found our mailbox to put it back up for us. And a perk in the neighborhood, we get people from all over, is he gives free sandboxing. That's, that's just the kind of guy, he's just a good guy, just. He's, he's a very good neighbor and if you meet with Bob. Trust me, you're, any complaint you have, we will address in this. So the best of his ability, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Ellen's, I live at two nine three two four Durant Avenue, directly across from Pine Materials, which my wife just talked about. And I guarantee you, you had trouble with the previous owner, you will not. No, you're told.
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me, sir. Sir, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
We don't point that people.
All right.
That's one thing.
Sorry.
The other thing, don't come up here and ask for an argument, because I'm sure we could give it to you, but I don't want to. You, you got one minute.
When we started there twenty years ago. There was nothing across the street, but it gravelled it. And we got used to that. And then Bob came through with a conditional use permit to develop it into minerals. Rock, sand, gravel. And we were just as concerned as everybody here. Um. But he talked to us, he leave, he said, if you have any issues, bring it to me, I will resolve them. And over the years, we had very few issues. Um, in fact, we got a lot of help, because we had some major uh, s- snowstorms. A few years ago, I couldn't handle with a snow blower shovel. Highway eleven was expanded to two and a half lanes because of the bypass. And our driveway was inundated with snow, packed in. I called up Bob and said, help, I can't get out. His son came over with an in loader from across the street. He cleared the driveway out so I could get up and down my driveway, my driveway is steep, sand and gravel. Uh, we have no issues with sound. Uh, he regularly waters the road going into the uh. Operation, so there's no dust. And he, like my wife said, he's landscaped very nicely. And we had no issues with Bob, in fact, he's been a great neighbor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I think most everybody has talked. Anybody on the board?
Sure, so, you know, we, we don't have an issue with zoning, obviously, so that's one discuss. And I appreciate that you're asking, you know, what do we want you to do? And you've heard the same discussion that we have this evening, so, um. You know, another thing that I would like to say, and I think it's been said in a couple of different ways, but. I don't like to blame the current applicant for anything that anybody else has done previously, so. You know, we can't, we can't assume ill intent, we have to assume good intent, and it sounds like from people that have. And it sounds like from people that have spoken up in favor, that that's been positive from the neighbors that are nearby. So, um, but what I, what I do feel like maybe needs some attention is, then I guess I can maybe start making a motion, or do you want to let anybody else talk? Does anybody else want to talk before I would make a motion?
I have one question. What's the difference between a, you know, privacy permit? I understand what that is. Is that more permanent than the, the temporary stockpile?
Right. A privacy berm can be put in the first hundred feet by a code. And a privacy berm has to be 100 feet off of the property, like, like code. We would like to put it all on 100 foot, but then it would be out of compliance. Only a permanent privacy berm can be put in the first hundred feet. Temporary berm has got to be in the next hundred feet. So it's a temporary during construction, and then that comes back now. That's the reason for that.
Lane has a question. On your phase three extraction area, is that a haul road that's going out to High Drive? It shows a haul road.
That was the original M4 zoning map.
Yeah.
That's where the M4 zoning county map shows the M4, uh, uh, for zoning. It's all M4. And if you look, it even goes on to, um, Gil's property, the M4. But that's just how the old map overlayed the other properties. And our prop, the property, the M4, the road frontage goes out to 20. But again, we don't want to use that. So that's what makes this work out well, is to go out through the other property.
Around the bin apart?
Right.
The existing model.
Just being used now.
And there's a hill. If you go west of the old gravel pit, there's a hill there, and if you go to the north, the, your estate goes down. So all that's going to be in phase three is pretty much water. There's not going to be much mining in phase three.
Okay. I guess I have some concerns, seeing I can't have a motion. Um, I guess when I'm sitting over there on the planning commission, I would certainly like to hear more again from the planning commission on what exactly all of the concerns we have and how they may be met. Okay, is that a possibility?
I think we can kind of speak to it. Are you giving us opportunity to speak to it now? Kind of address some of those highlights?
I, I don't, the, the only reason I don't like doing anything more is there's only four of us here today. And I would prefer that we had the whole town planning this two years, so.
If you could line item, line item on out, if I just know what your concerns are, how are you going to address them?
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of concerns today, and I think we afford everyone to, you know, give them a formal response to their concerns. So I've been taking quite a few notes, and I'm sure you guys missed a couple here. So, um, noise and dust is, is a big one. Hours of operation concern. And we have the application, right? We all, we're good there.
Yes.
You answer the question regarding the privacy berm versus the, um, temporary stockpile?
What we did find out about the, the hours is the town of Waterford, the town of Waterford is southern, southern of five. So we found that out after we made the application. So we're willing to, we just thought, ground, the first round gets out before traffic. But we're willing to go to the southern five, which is one of your concerns. So that's, that's not a problem.
Six to the end, it's on pretty well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there won't be noise by any place because we're gonna, all the processing thing's gonna be over on the way in. The trucks are loaded and stuff.
I know I already spoke, but one of my other concerns, my dad keeps bringing up, and I, I don't know what other people that live by these other ones, as far as water. These are wells. How deep are you going? Are you going to affect their wells?
Let me put that on the list.
We'll give well protection. We commit our other bits.
We had the same exact concerns.
Yeah, that's fine.
So if we're gonna have line item list, that would be pretty helpful.
Okay, Michael.
This is no reflection on Mr. Effing because I've never heard anything about fuel. But you're asking the board to write down certain things that they're concerned about based upon the people's recommendations tonight. I'm going to say it again. I think we have to have a engineer look at this that is not the engineer that is developing. I would, I just hope that you can do it the other way. And all I'm asking, Mr. Effing, is one, is one thing. You submitted a application to the town, and the town has, whether or not the major reason, I will check later. Uh, the town has certain obligations, but I mean, we have our own, by the way, uh, extractive operations ordinance that Springberry might not have had. I can't remember. No, no, that was more of a county issue. Here you have the zoning. So it's really just a conditional usage. And, uh, I, again, from my standpoint here, I don't, I can only make recommendations to the board who wishes to. But in a situation like this, where all these people are here, you might want to, you might want to, uh, defer this back to the planning commission. Uh, and schedule some type of meeting in the meantime with these people. And in the same process, to indicate that the town isn't giving up any rights to take any action. We're sort of in a cooling off period. We're not, once, once you submit an application, we have to do certain things. Okay? But if you agree that that time period is held up, that's, we have no problem with that. And the town board will look at this next week. And town board might, might agree with me and say that they give an engineering firm much, much of that. I don't know. But, uh, this at least gives you the time period. You're not losing anything except 30 days or whatever it is. We're not losing anything. We're not giving up any rights. We're having a chance to talk to some of these people. And I will say that you are zoned that property as opposed to any others. So, uh, this is not a construction against you at all. I haven't been able to comment about any of that, or whatever. It's up to him, I guess, to decide. But if he doesn't agree to that, then I recommend, uh, you recommend the town board.
I agree. Whatever you guys want me to do.
Oh, dude, that was the, that light open.
Can I say?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that's why I got to.
Well, okay, so, so my thought, my understanding, your means for doing this, but I, I don't, I don't know that we're going to get any more out of the planning commission next month than sending it directly to the town board. So I would prefer not to lay it over and to give you the conditions at this point and, and recommend that it go to the board is my thought, but.
Without that being unanimous, well, I mean, but you say going to a board member, that's a forum of the seven, that's a long thing. So if you're proposing to leave conditions this evening?
I was, but if we have to have a full, if we have to have unanimous tonight, I'm not sure that I'm going to get that. So if it's in their best interest to.
You could defer, you could if you wanted to. Defer this to town board, but that would give them a week. You know, as opposed to, get this thing through. So unless you're going to do something in the next 30 days that has to be done, these things don't go quickly, as you, as you, as you know. Uh, these things take sometimes months. And, uh, like I said, if you do have one advantage, sure you are going forward. So that's my recommendation. It's up to the chair.
Yeah, I, I understand what you said. I'm going to make a motion that we, we table it for one month. And in the meantime, uh, we get answers to the concerns that were laid out this evening. And then have a formal presentation. I mean, people took time out of their, 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 their day to come in here and, and present their concerns. And I think we owe it to them to, to, to address those concerns. And so on, on the list of concerns that need to be formally addressed would be, uh, a big one near, near my heart is the well protection, uh, the dust, the noise. You said you've already addressed the hours of operation, but I think we need to amend the, the application. Should we make that very clear?
Uh, my biggest concern was the idea that we don't have an engineer looking at this. Like I said, I could put my name to some kind of nice paper, do it nice on computer, and say, was the engineering coming here? Okay, looks good. Now, it doesn't work out legally. Uh, you know, and I, you know where I'm coming from there? That'd be too easy to do that. So I guess my recommendation is I'd like to see you back again. Uh, perhaps I could, or the chairman, when he's back, or both of us, or how we want to do it, meet someday and discuss all the concerns first before you come back to to the planning commission again. How's that, Tom?
Yeah.
That look, right?
As long as we have an agreement, I'm sure we're open.
And I think the other concern that I heard this evening within the town, is line of sight, right?
Yeah, sight limit.
What can we do? Trees or legal burns? I don't know. I don't know nothing about burns.
And you guys, you know, try thinking like me, but I know that's a terrible idea, but think what the opposite. In this one case, the opposition, what would we, what would we be asking?
Well, that's why I thought by going out, bringing a third boat to the old gravel pit, instead of the M4 road frontage that goes out to 20.
Yeah, but there's still more, there's still more than, than that. When you negotiate a contract, I was taught, you sit on the other side. And you have to argue for the other side. So that when you come back, you're prepared to deal with the opponent because you already kind of thought like that. Not that I'm pretty rough to deal with. But the chairman would be in charge of that. But I, you can contact me, talk to Heather or Tina in the office. See what we can work. Maybe three, four of us together. You guys first. It'd be real nice if you could get together. Then we really have something to go with. Just don't want to throw it out the window.
Your motion was a federal.
Right. I got that, but are we making a part of the motion that they also meet with the commissioners? I mean, it's kind of confusing.
No, we'll do the office. And there was a table where there'd be days.
Right. And I, I have that.
The, uh, proponent agrees with that there's days. Uh, and nobody is prejudiced in anybody's rights for not running anything statute or any of these problems on the suit or running a time. Uh, this will come before the town board. Hopefully, they'll accept the same recommendation that the planning commission is, that they'll meet four times next, next week. And, uh, hopefully then by next planning commission meeting, sure, like, y'all are affiliated and both of us, that's just look together on it.
I have a question, Mr. Phillips, for you. Having the same engineer, is that? That's conflict interest, right? I mean, you can't be the district attorney and represent that you got it at the same time.
It'll matter, uh, like I said, we've had the same engineer, or the surveyor coming in with a, you know, simple CSM plan. We don't, we don't take any issue with that. But in my opinion, you know, again, this will, I, I think it's pretty clear, you're actually that you can't have the same, same firm reviewing this. And that's why in our extractive operations ordinance, we have a provision in there that costs a lot to develop or picking up the cost filed with respect to the engineering cost. And it's no reflection on the berm. They've done a good job for the township. There's no reflection on Mr. Effing, but, but we really can't. So again, the town board, the two members are here today. So they've heard what I've said, so I'm sure they'll pick it up themselves. Mr. Uh, Mr. Or might, uh, excuse me, Mr. Effing might consider that the town or the town itself might consider having somebody to review this. Plans might be fine. Need somebody to look at it. And nobody on our board is qualified to do that. So again, I think your town board can figure what I just said. If your motion is fine. And it's.
Would you, um, so to add to the motion, uh, engineering review of the existing.
Okay. We've never done this before.
I mean, it's almost an automatic denial, right?
He's agreed to the extension. He's heard what we've indicated with respect to the engineering, but he doesn't understand what we're saying. Uh, if he comes back again, still be in the same firm. Doesn't want to, you know, that doesn't want to pick up the town's cost and having some other firm look at it. Uh, shouldn't be wrong to deny all that, that happens. The town does have a right to have it, you know, have a independent review of the planning. And again, it might be perfectly fine.
Does it, does it have to be a different engineering firm or just a different engineer within?
Everybody's a partner or an associate or the whatever.
Well, I'm just using the real estate, you know, for friends that I can be a.
The owners can take both sides. A provision in the law, you can be a tool agent, right in your, right in the law. There's no law on engineering that I'm aware of. No law on the engineering that this state decided on something like this. Again, that's up to the town board when they do it.
Do you understand the motion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
You seconded it.
Both? Four ayes, one no?
It doesn't, was there a no?
No, there was, no, no.
Okay, yeah.
I thank everybody for coming today. I greatly appreciate it.
Salute.